Welcome to the Lakewood City Council meeting for this Monday, November twenty-one, two thousand and twenty-two. Madam Clerk, if you'd please call the roll.
Councilmember Anderson. Councilmember Bell.
Here.
Bokey.
Here.
Councilmember Branstetter.
Here.
Councilmember Farmer.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Moss.
Here.
And Mayor Whalen.
Present.
You have a quorum?
Thank you very much. Now, if you'd all please stand and join me in a moment of silence, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance to our nation's flag. Moment of silence is particularly important as we head into this holiday weekend with friends and family and celebrate the spirit of Thanksgiving here, not only in the city of Lakewood, but around the country. There are certain moments of challenge that we're all experiencing as a community, and it's a time to to think about those that are less fortunate than ourselves.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, without individual liberty and justice.
Well, thank you very much, and thank you all for coming tonight, and thank you to our friends and neighbors who are visiting us virtually as we live stream our council meeting tonight. Our first section of tonight's meeting includes proclamations and presentations, and we are honored tonight to present a proclamation recognizing Native American Heritage Month to our Friends and Nisqually Tribal Council. And if Chairman Willie Frank III and Fifth Councilwoman Shay Squali would accompany me to the podium, we'll read and present the proclamation and give you a chance to give us good greetings and wishes. Welcome. Well, we have enjoyed our growing relationship and partnership over the last several years and look forward to many, many more years together, and it is with great pride that our council presents this proclamation. Whereas Washington State is home to twenty-nine federally recognized Indian tribes, and in Lakewood, the Nisqually and Silicon people were the first inhabitants of the land, using what was once a prairie as a ready source of food and a gathering place. And whereas Lakewood is committed to supporting and strengthening government-to-government relationships with our tribal neighbors and recognizes the contributions of indigenous people, that they are woven deeply into our rich tapestry. And whereas the city and the Nisqually Indian Tribe are engaged in a collaborative partnership to develop interpretive installations on public lands within the city that feature the unique culture and history of the Nisqually Indian Tribe. And whereas a pilot project is slated for Fort Silicon Park that will add native art and cultural interpretive markings along the one-point-seven-mile Nisqually Loop Trail that will include descriptions of traditional uses of the area, information about the Nisqually Tribe, Chief Leshai's legacy, and the Lushusi language. And whereas the city recognizes that we are on the lands of the Nisqually and Silicon Peoples, and we acknowledge the history of dispossession that has allowed for the growth of our own community. And whereas despite this history, indigenous peoples, their governments, and their communities have persevered and flourished as teachers and scholars, scientists and doctors, writers and artists, business leaders and elected officials, heroes in uniform, and so much more, making immeasurable contributions to our country's progress. And whereas the city offers its deep respect to the Nisqually and Silicon people and their elders, and we reaffirm our commitment to preserve the traditions and culture of the tribes and to honor the unique heritage of our first inhabitants. Now therefore be resolved that the Lakewood City Council does hereby proclaim this November, two thousand and twenty-two as Native American Heritage Month here in the city of Lakewood, and we call upon all residents to commemorate this month with appropriate programs and activities. Proclaim this twenty-first day of November, two thousand and twenty-two, Jason Whalen, Mayor. It is with great honor Chairman Frank that we are blessed by your presence today, and thank you very much for your partnership. Good to see you, and the floor is now yours, and we'll take a photo at the end. All right, great.
Thank you so much, Mayor. Thank you, Council, for this great day. You know, my name is Willie Frank III, my Indian name is Kualashkid, and I am chairman of the Nisqually Tribe. I've been on tribal council twelve years, and I've had the opportunity to learn and work with many of you already, but I think now we're in a different period. You're seeing the younger leadership at the tribal level, you know, really reach out and want to work with everybody. You know, the local jurisdictions, whether it's city-state or other tribes, because I think right here in this area, we know the importance of communication and teamwork and working together. And I am very excited to see the the park and continue the the partnership on working on this. I'm going to let Shay say a few words because she is our language keeper, and she's also our fifth councilwoman. So any signs you need Lushusi language on, Shay's our our lady.
Twahhek, sorry. Twahhek Skalali Tu. Chacha Ko'watu Buul Ok Edetu Chesh Eske Edetu Chesh. Twabak Si'i Abdi Eeshin. Skali Apch Chesh. Shikachib Chesh Twotish Lok Ok Chesh. Asekutap Tish Lok Lok Gwasa Taduf Gwol Gwobak Stab. Ok Edetu Chesh Dai Halt Tisasko Chesh Otisakhe. Eske Edetu Chesh Atabak Akbuuf Otidisha. Tech Tufti Eesh Chesh Yav Tisya Yaya Chesh. Lab Tufo Gwa. Akke Ke Gwala Beegweed Halt. Hali Ilhiil Bi Gwol. Halt Iyabil Otsho Gwa. Bak Di Eeshin. Thank you all for inviting us out and reading the proclamation. This is a, this is going to build so so many strong relationships, and I can't wait for the projects that we're able to collaborate on. I feel like this thing just started working. But I'm excited for the Silicon Park, and I can't wait to see what what we come up with after this. Thank you.
Is that not on? I was reading it. It's on now. Okay. Next, we have a presentation of the two thousand and twenty-two Governor's Smart Communities Award, and for this, I'll call on Carrie Sally from the Washington State Department of Commerce. Carrie?
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Carrie Sally. I'm with the Washington State Department of Commerce Local Government Division. And in my role as a senior planner, I provide technical assistance to Pierce County and its cities on growth management issues, including updating the comprehensive plan and other long-range planning matters. So it's really great to be able to to come here in person. This is my first visit to Lakewood. So thank you for for having me tonight as a representative of Governor Inslee's office and of the Department of Commerce. I'm here to congratulate the city of Lakewood, Mayor Whalen, City Council, your other appointed officials, your planning staff and consultants. A very special achievement, which is to win not one, but two of the Governor's Smart Community Awards for two thousand and twenty-two. I'm actually not aware of any other city that has done that, two awards in one year. So that's a very outstanding achievement. These awards have been given each year since two thousand and six to recognize local governments whose exceptional planning efforts have significantly contributed to their communities by furthering the goals of the State Growth Management Act and other community development objectives. The city of Lakewood has prepared outstanding planning documents in the areas of both climate strategies and smart vision. So that's really quite an achievement, very different categories as well. So first, I'd like to talk a little bit about the Governor's Smart Climate Strategies Award, which is, which has been awarded for the city's two thousand and twenty-one Comprehensive Plan Energy and Climate Change Chapter in your comprehensive plan. In two thousand and twenty, Lakewood began proactively developing climate change policies, including incentives and voluntary actions and potential regulations to address energy emissions and reduction of climate change effects. And these, you decided to do this before any state or regional requirements or mandates had come into effect. This has been talked a lot about in the legislature in the past couple of sessions, but you guys decided to start moving on this before you were required to do so. You've taken, you know, the incentive to do this. City staff prepared your new chapter over twelve months regarding city-specific greenhouse gas emissions and anticipated climate change impacts and how those will affect the city and how you will plan for that. The chapter will now be considered a model that other local jurisdictions can look to. And as we see more and more interest in planning to reduce, prepare for, mitigate climate change, we see that there's really going to be a demand for this in the upcoming two thousand and twenty-four comp plan updates. So we're very pleased that you've taken this far-sided approach to climate change planning and that you've, you're focusing on protecting your citizens and their environment by incorporating climate change planning into your comprehensive planning. And second, I'd like to present or or sum up the Governor's Judges' Merit Award, which has been given for the city's two thousand and twenty-one Lakewood Station District Subarea Plan. The Lakewood Station District Subarea Plan was adopted along with a new Form-Based Development Code and Planned Action Ordinance over eighteen months by city staff and consultants, along with input from local developers and citizens, agency partners, and other stakeholders. The plan implements longstanding comprehensive goals and strategies and focuses on the creation of affordable housing, anti-displacement of city residents, and growth of new jobs, all of which will be supported by direct transportation access. The judges found that the Subarea Plan's vision will contribute to Lakewood's future economic success and will support and protect affordable housing opportunities for Lakewood's current and future residents. And again, we see this as a model for other cities that are thinking about proposing subarea plans with direct access to transit modalities. And so once again, we we really appreciate what you've done here. The work has been truly outstanding, and you have been acknowledged, and you are appreciated for the work that you do here. Thank you very much.
Well, thank you very much, Carrie. It's very much appreciated, and and I don't know quite what to say except thank you, and much, of course, goes to, kudos goes to our our staff. We have incredibly bright, hard-working folks here at the city of Lakewood that very much try to embrace council's goals and objectives and work every day to move the ball forward. And so this recognition is really recognition of their efforts. We appreciate the the thanks for council's policy goals and objectives, but it really is good, hard-working staff that makes it happen. So thank you for recognizing their efforts. And we'll take a picture, but I really appreciate you coming tonight.
Thank you, and and I have to agree. It's been a pleasure to work with your staff in your planning department. I've only worked with them on the phone and through Zoom so far. But, you know, I hope to meet them more and work with them more closely in future.
Well, fabulous. So it's great to hear that we're a leader in something positive. That's always a good thing. Thank you. One down. Yes, and Mr. Buer, you should come down along with other staff members because you are very much part and parcel to this series of accolades. Thank you. It goes without saying, when I say thanks to our staff, I certainly include our city manager and the executive team, because without them, very little of this good work would would go forward. So thank you, Mr. Coffield and Ms. Kraus, all of you who do good work here in the city. It's just fantastic to get recognition for your efforts. So thank you for that. Okay. Next, we turn to the public comment section of tonight's agenda. Public comments are accepted by mail, email, or live, virtual, or in-person comment. Comments may be submitted in advance by mail or email to our city clerk, Ms. Schumacher, at six thousand Main Street Southwest here in Lakewood, or to her email address at bshumacher@cityoflakewood.us. Comments received up to an hour before the meeting have been provided to the city council electronically. I personally have read many of them tonight. The clerk will read the names of those who have submitted comments in advance.
Mayor, we received comments in advance of the meeting from Jennifer Adams, Casey Crook, Glenda Disney, James Dunlop, Sean Hill, Christina Minetti, Judith Minetti, Matthew McCarthy, Jeff Munze, Sean Munze, and Deana Snow.
Thank you very much, and to those who did provide written comments, you need not repeat them orally if you don't wish to. If you would like to, you're certainly welcome to do so tonight, but rest assured that we have received the written comments electronically. Members of the audience may comment on items relating to any matter pertaining to city business under this public comment period. Please note that comments are limited to three minutes per person. There is a public hearing later this evening. If you'd like to provide testimony specific to the two thousand and twenty-three Comprehensive Plan and Zoning Map Amendment Packet, please do so under the public hearings portion of the agenda so that we can make sure that your testimony is contained within the record. Virtual comments are certainly allowed. If you'd like to provide virtual public comments, you need to join join the Zoom, not join the Zoom. Join the Zoom meeting as an attendee by calling the telephone number appearing on your screen and by raising your virtual hand to be called upon. So I will first tonight call on those who have appeared virtually, and that will be followed by those who have signed in to testify or provide public comment, rather, in person. Those who are appearing virtually include the six that I see on the screen. Mr. Otto Equitas is first.
Well, thank you. I didn't raise my hand yet. I appreciate it. Uh. Can y'all hear me okay?
Yes.
Perfect. Thank you. Just wanted to make sure I wasn't talking to myself, although, you know, maybe that's what everybody would prefer. Um. I was really upset that I wasn't able to come in person today because I saw all the great things on the agenda. But after seeing it, I'm kind of happy that I'm not there because I was able to just swipe down and not have to witness rich white bureaucrats flex to rich white bureaucrats about how great they are at doing the things they do. The city of Lakewood won an environmental award today. Couple weeks after y'all decided to cut down trees and level an entire area for a warehouse, one that you guys know is poisoned, and it's just going to wash more poison into the city. But how is that going to affect the environment? It don't matter. And then you have the audacity to accept an award. Now, the planners, they might be great planners, but how is it being executed? That's the problem. You guys got a lot of great words out there. There's a lot of talk going on, and y'all talk smooth sometimes. Y'all get the people real riled up, and then it all turns out to be lies, like we said last time, right? If the representative from the state is still there, look into what's been happening in Lakewood. Don't run off of the plan. Because plans mean nothing without execution. If the representatives of the tribes are still there, I hope that you take pride in everything that you're doing because it's a struggle every day, and we know that. And I hope that you realize that a gentleman by the name of Christopher Esposito comes in there almost every week and talks about how tribal land should be returned back to the indigenous community, and he gets eye rolls, and he gets the little smirks from the city council, maybe not all, but a chunk of them. And then they'd want to honor you in the month of November. I hope you do well.
Next is Bunche Carter.
Oh, that's, okay. Can you hear me now? Seems like I had to wait for a second. All right, well. My name is Bunche Carter, Minister of Defense of the Black Panther Party. I'm not going to take the whole three minutes because I feel like I will be parroting everything that Adam just said. But I do want to say this to the tribes that are present and any other people who are part of indigenous tribes that are listening. I need you to ask yourself a question, if you haven't already. Why is it necessary for the government, in any form of a country that was basically built upon land that belonged to you in the first place? Why does that government have to give you the right to utilize your land, the right to do what you need to do with your land, the right to grow on your land, the right to prosper on land that already belongs to you? Much like my brother said, Christopher Esposito is a excellent person. He's a great man, and he is absolutely positively committed to making sure that under any circumstances that arise, indigenous people will be given back rights to their land by whatever means may be necessary to do so. There is a strange, it's kind of weird that this is coming up right now, but I don't think it really is, being that we are coming up on a holiday, so they call it, that celebrates something that isn't factual, like most holidays, but it is what it is. At the end of the day, we have to recognize and understand that control, that returning the control of the means of production to the people is the only way that we can rectify the issues that exist in this country. I'm done talking. All power to the people. Justice for society. Why can't?
Dosari Farmacus is next.
Yeah, so I'm Dosari Farmacus. I'm a resident spoken in Washington, and I'm the Minister of Education for the Panther Party. First thing I would like to say is, as far as the the award, get giving these these individuals an award for anything related to the environment, especially climate change, you know, cutting down a bunch of ancient endangered trees, you know, that is a huge contributor to climate change, and that's what these gentlemen are doing. Now, I'm I'm sure, these ladies and gentlemen, excuse me, I'm sure that I'm I'm sure the governor's office is probably aware of that. If you're not, I hope you are now. But I also understand that, you know, unlike developing alternative energy structures, which, you know, we're all more than happy to get on board with, or, you know, developing infrastructure. You know, those things, unlike those things, preserving the environment, preserving those trees, doesn't make anyone money. And that's why they're able to be environmentalists when it comes time to to build some alternative infrastructure. But they don't give a, they don't give a hoot when it comes to actually preserving the the land that, again, does not belong to you, right? It was this stolen land that you're tearing down, destroying the environment because you only care about environmental issues when you can make a dime off of it. Right? This is, this is the thing. I mean, it's a joke, right? Giving any of these people an environmental award is a joke. But I would expect that maybe the Department of Commerce is also more focused on making a buck. Honoring, you know, these proclamations, y'all love your proclamations. Putting out another proclamation about how you, you know, respect indigenous cultures. You know, you'll put up, put up signs about it, put up proclamations, put up exhibits. But none of that has anything to do with people's material conditions, with the material reality that you are living on stolen land, benefiting from it, that that you don't care about tearing down, again, the trees that exist on that stolen land. That that you don't care. You you say, oh, we recognize the 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 tragedies that that, you know, were committed, oh, the the, what was it, the relocation that occurred? It just occurred, right? It wasn't, we we did it to someone, right? But but that doesn't stop you, right? That doesn't stop you from naming your cultural center Colonial Plaza. You recognize that something wrong was done, but you're happy to keep doing it, except when it's time to play nice and make a nice little statement about it. Nice little proclamation to make you look like like some sort of civil rights, like, supporter, which you are not.
That's the last individual who has signed up to address the council virtually during this public comment period. We'll now turn to comments from individuals here physically present who will provide something of substance to say. The first who has signed up is Casey Crook.
My name is Casey. I'm a lifelong Lakewood resident. I have spoken in person with hundreds of Lakewood friends and neighbors about the potential total loss of our historic Lakewood Library Tenser Building. I have listened to their thoughts about the Pierce County Library System's role in Lakewood's library properties and services. The three main areas of concern I hear from my neighbors are, one, a deep sense of personal loss and communal loss. You know, folks want so much to find a way to preserve this historic aspect of Lakewood's soul and character. Two, dissatisfaction with how their tax dollars and private donations have been used and financial distrust in the Pierce County Library System moving forward. Three, a severe lack of faith in county government, as well as disgust in unelected, unaccountable bureaucrats fulfilling their own agendas, regardless of the democratic will of citizens. I regularly encounter the very popular desire for Lakewood to de-annex from the Pierce County Library System. Lakewood has been its own city for quite some time now. Lakewood is a decently sized city. Decently sized cities are absolutely capable of owning and operating their own neighborhood libraries. Our beautiful and spirited city is perfectly capable of providing its citizens with library services by Lakewood for Lakewood. Lakewood does not have to depend on the Pierce County Library System in order to have successful library services. Lakewood taking the fate of its libraries into its own hands would be a new choice, which is by no means impractical or impossible. There is no such thing as a one size fits all prescription for what a community library should be. A hometown library by Lakewood for Lakewood would give Lakewood residents vital opportunities to personally participate in representing their own community's culture. A hometown library by Lakewood for Lakewood could offer Lakewood taxpayers and private donors critical financial transparency that is not possible under the control of the Pierce County Library System. A hometown library by Lakewood for Lakewood could make it possible for Lakewood residents to clearly view, monitor, and question specifically how their money is spent and whether or not it is spent sufficiently in their interest. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next, Linda Disney.
Mayor Wayland and members of the Lakewood City Council, thank you very much for allowing me to make comment this evening. I am Linda Disney and I am the Director of Development for Support the Enlisted Project, STEP. I'm here to ask for your recommendation for human services grant funding. STEP helps young military families, E1 to E6, and transitioning veterans who are in financial crisis. With emergency grants, financial counseling, education, and other support programs, STEP's social workers who are certified in financial counseling help clients achieve self-sufficiency. We believe in giving a hand up, not only a handout. Behavior change is the core premise of STEP's program, the Emergency Financial Assistance. STEP is celebrating its 10-year anniversary this year and we are proud that we have a 92% success rate with our clients. We are located in Tacoma, Washington and San Diego, California. I am honored to represent STEP in the state of Washington. STEP applied for and was greatly relying on receiving a grant from the Community Services Advisory Board Human Service Funding. However, this committee did not recommend us. And I'm here to clear up some inaccuracies that they reached. Um, first, they saw the organization as a national organization. And secondly, they believed the services that we provided were not available, were available other places. As flattered as we were, uh, to be called a national organization, STEP is not yet performing at that grand scale. The headquarters is in San Diego, but two years ago, we opened an office in Tacoma, Washington and began offering services throughout the state. Why? Because the military footprint in and around JBLM is like the San Diego area. In addition to the high concentration of military personnel, both areas face high cost of living and neither have adequate housing available on base. That forces young military families to live and survive within the surrounding communities. STEP is very much a local nonprofit. And we rely on, uh, individual donors, city and county jurisdictions, and corporate philanthropy. The services that we provide are not, uh, provided on base. First of all, we offer grants. Those are grants that do not have to be repaid. And we offer a caseworker that works with our, uh, clients on a, for a year-long basis. And then finally, we meet clients where they need to meet. If you are a military spouse and you can't make it on base, we are there to help you. I am here to ask you to please go forward with the grants.
Thank you. Next, Reverend Paul Ziegler.
Thank you for your time today. I'm here as well to address, uh, our application for the human services grant. Mayor Wayland, how appropriate this morning that you opened up with a moment of silence as we reflect on Thanksgiving for those who are less fortunate and going without. Especially this holiday season. That's what we're all about with lows and fishes. This is a ministry that started back in 2018 when a church member of mine, Joe Hoistman, passed away. Left some money to our church, to our food bank that had been operating for many years. We use that money to feed about 30 families. Next year, it was a little too much for my members to handle, so we reached out to a neighboring church right here in Lakewood with us, First Baptist. And we grew and we served more families focusing on our relationships with Taiyi Park Elementary and Tillicum Schools and those in our community. Fast forward to today. We are now serving 30 schools, 29 of which are Clover Park Schools and One Private. We're here, we are Lakewood, we're operated with your Lakewood residents from volunteers from Lakewood. We're funded by Lakewood and its people through our churches, through neighboring businesses and partnership. And we reached out to you for this grant as well, for any amount of assistance that makes this possible. Just this last Saturday, we fed 650 families, 3,500 people, 1,650 adults, 1,950 children with only 140 volunteers. We are asking you to please reconsider our application, any amount. And if that is not possible, we welcome you on December 17th when we do this again, to come join us over at First Baptist Church and come work alongside your Lakewood residents. And join us and see the operation which we do and see the joy of the faces of these people, your residents, whom we're feeding. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Thank you for coming. Sue Potter is next.
Hi, my name is Sue Potter and I'm the CEO of Nourish Pierce County Food Banks. And I'm here tonight to, uh, ask for your consideration on our application for the American Rescue Plan funding. Um, some of you already know the Nourish story. But our mission is to serve all in need with compassion, dignity, and respect. And here in Lakewood, we serve approximately 14% of the population at least one time every year. Most of those visits are through our food pantry at the Lakewood United Methodist Church over on Silicon Boulevard. Uh, but we also have a semi-truck that is a mobile food bank that serves Tillicum, Pierce College, and Clover Park Tech College. And I'm also very happy to say our warehouse is also located in Lakewood, which services all of the 21 Nourish food pantry sites. But I'm here tonight because I'm actually uh, a little bit ashamed of how we serve here in Lakewood. We've been serving now in Lakewood in the county for 50 years, starting in January. That's a good thing. We're here after 50 years, but it's also a bad thing because that means hunger still exists. But our Lakewood location started at Little Church on the Prairie. And eventually Little Church couldn't couldn't house us any longer. And the Methodist Church was kind enough to open the doors for us. But we are in the basement of that location. And it's not ADA compliant. It is very difficult to navigate. And every month, we have to move 100,000 pounds of food in and out of the windows in order to have an operational food pantry. In addition, we, so far this year, we've seen just slightly under 47,000 visitors at that location. We are bursting at the seams. It was supposed to be a temporary location about 12 years ago. And I know since I've been at Nourish almost eight years, we've been looking for a brand new site in Lakewood and have had no luck. But we got lucky and we found a fantastic site located on the corner of Silicon Boulevard on Lakewood Avenue. The, uh, Mattress Ranch facility. And we're working with the owner to purchase that site as we speak. But we need your help and your partnership. That site would offer us the opportunity to bring in a state-of-the-art food pantry that was, uh, also large enough to provide community wraparound services. And to be a beacon of respect and dignity as people in need go to get their food. I welcome you to come see our current site. And then to drive by and just envision of the wonderful location and the wonderful things that Nourish could do at a site like the Mattress Ranch. So thank you for your consideration. We need your partnership and happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you very much. Next, Christina Manetti.
Uh, hello, Christina Manetti, Lakewood resident since 1972. First, I'd like to wholeheartedly agree with Casey Crook's public comments about the library. And I'm here to urge, um, the Lakewood City Council to act decisively in defense of our beloved city treasure, the uniquely welcoming, award-winning former Tensler Library Building. It's not just a building, as some people have said, but a structure of special, sometimes even almost spiritual importance for many people throughout Lakewood, young and old, and also beyond. The Burt Consultants, in their summary of the advisory committee's recommendations, said that, quote, "Many in the community have an emotional attachment to the library building, which has a demeaning patronizing air to it, as generally the communications from the Pierce County Library System have had since the initial announcement in April. Emotional is the opposite of rational and therefore should be discounted. Just get over it. But emotion is what fills our lives with meaning and our relationship to the places we live. There is something in environmental psychology, which is a science after all and therefore rational, called place attachment, which is the emotional and psychological bond to the place we live. Place attachment is good. It's something you want to foster. It builds community that you're constantly talking about. It seems that many of the people who have, are most vested in Lakewood, those who have lived here for many decades or even generations from all walks of life, feel that they've been largely left out of decision-making about their city. They ask me, who are these people? Are they even from Lakewood? In the case of many people in decision-making positions, particularly the PCLS Board of Trustees, the answer is no. Special consideration needs to be given to people who are truly connected to this place. A city is made of its people and the physical places that grow with it from different epochs, from different purpose, for different purposes. Um, the, the squares, the churches that you know from Italy or whatever, the old buildings that give their cities character and continuity from generation to generation. Libraries are particularly important, especially in many American towns, which generally have so few important places, especially in the West. I, yeah, I even found a, a study, um, about the special importance of Lakewood's two-place attachment. And I can send that to you when I get the copy from the author. Libraries that distinguish themselves architecturally like ours are particularly special and elevate them even further. People love the Tensler Building precisely because they feel good there. This is why Russell Garrison won a prestigious architectural award for his work. It's a wonderful piece of library architecture that must be preserved as part of Lakewood's material and cultural heritage. Let us have something to be truly proud of. Let us have our Lakewood library. You will be regarded as heroes for helping make this happen, DNX. So the people who have Lakewood's best interests at heart are the ones deciding the fate of our library. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is James Dunlop.
Hello, my name is James Dunlop and I'm a Lakewood resident. Uh, I want to start off by thanking you all for making the Gary Oak Lakewood's, uh, city tree. I think this was a, an exercise of soft power. You were giving people a moral incentive to maintain any Gary Oaks that might be on their property. But this, what I really wanted to talk about is the library and, and specifically de-annexation. The function of, sorry, the advantage of being part of the Pierce County Library System, which I think Lakewood has been since 1991, is that the Lakewood Library System, the Pierce County Library System has the resources supposedly to maintain the Tensler Building. Now, in those 30, 30-odd years, it has done a poor job of, of maintaining that building. Uh, it is, it has been neglected. It is falling apart apparently. It seems that the Pierce County Library System want to pull it down. Perhaps move somewhere else. Apparently, the AdHOP Library Committee have recommended that it be, it be pulled down and there's something else put on, put on top of it. Um, that AdHOP Library System was very choreographed. It was managed by the library system, by the Burt Consultancy. So I think we, you know, you can really disregard its recommendations. So it is now in Lakewood's interests to de-annex. It, the de-annexation means Lakewood would have its own library system or its own public library, like in Pualup. And I think that Lakewood, the city council now needs to move forward with that process. And I think the first thing you need to do is you need to have a public hearing so that everyone in Lakewood can give their opinion on de-annexation. From what I have gathered, there's great, a lot of, a lot of support from it, for it, from across the spectrum. And a public hearing is a good way of gauging what that support is and what criticisms are and so forth. After that, you as a council can vote to de-annex. I've sent you, in my written comment, I've been more specific. And having voted on, having voted to de-annex, you can put it to the people of Lakewood. There are ways to avoid a ballot, but I somehow think that the Pierce County Library System and its Board of Trustees are not going to give you the support you need. But what I would really ask you, you to do as soon as possible is to have a public hearing to start the process by which Lakewood can have its own library system. Thank you.
Thank you. That is the last individual who has signed up to address the council during the public comment period in the audience. If there's anyone that, uh, would still like to address council during the public comment period who has yet to sign in, fear not, you can certainly step up to the podium and have your three minutes. If there's anyone who is in the audience who would like to address the council during the public comment period, this is the time. Seeing no additional individuals, uh, seeking to address the council, I'll declare the public comment period closed. We'll now turn to the consent agenda. Madam Clerk.
A, approval of the minutes of the city council meeting of November 7th, 2022. B, approval of the minutes of the city council study session of November 14th, 2022. C, motion number 2022-92, authorizing the execution of an agreement with Burt Consulting related to the 2024 Comprehensive Plan Periodic Review. D, motion number 2022-93, accepting a donation in the amount of 15,000 from Amazon for the Lakewood Yoga Welcome Walk Program and Summer Fest. E, motion number 2022-94, accepting a donation in the amount of $18,500 from Virginia Mason for the Lakewood Farmers Market, Summer Fest, and Lakewood Yoga Welcome Walk Program. F, items filed in the Office of the City Clerk. One, Planning Commission meeting minutes of October 19th, 2022.
Thank you very much. Is there any item on the consent agenda which any council member wishes to pull at this time? If not, do I have a motion to adopt the consent agenda as presented?
So moved.
Been moved by Councilmember Bell. Second, am I Councilmember Brandsetter that we adopt the consent agenda as presented? Is there any further discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The consent agenda has been adopted. We now turn to the regular agenda. First up, public hearings and appeals. This is the date set for the public hearing on the 2023 Lakewood Comprehensive Plan and Zoning Map Amendment docket. We're not, uh, having a hearing per se or any action tonight other than that. So for this, we will call on our long-range and strategic planning manager Tiffany Spear for an overview.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So just to walk very briefly through the nine applications that are in front of you this evening for public hearing. Um, if you'll recall, there were eight that were originally, excuse me, seven that were originally recommended to you by the Planning Commission. Two were discussed with you at, uh, the last discussion here at council. One of which was for adding, now that you've adopted your tree code updates, the, uh, policy in the comprehensive plan for a 40% tree canopy cover. That's been That's been added as amendment number one. And then amendment number nine relates to a request made by Councilmember Branstad regarding ADUs and the requirement or removal of it for an owner to either be in the primary residence or accessory dwelling unit when there is one on a piece of parcel. What I did want to point out this evening was in recommended application twenty twenty-three oh two, in blue, you'll see that there was a technical error by city staff. I'll take full ownership of this. There were two parcels that should have been included in the materials for this evening's hearing that were not by mistake. They were included in the map but not listed, and so they are there, parcel ending in zero two zero zero and four zero two four. So if you were to look at this map on the bottom left, it's those two parcels where there is no number pointed, but the purple arrows are pointing there. So again, it was included by intent and by map, but it wasn't included in the actual language. So other than that, if you remember, there was that request, there was the climate change tree canopy goal. There's a request from Lhasa to rezone property for Gravely Lake Commons Phase Three. There were several changes due to state law. There was a request from the city to rezone a parcel to expand towards Lake Park. And then the request to incorporate changes in policy and maps for the Western State Hospital Master Plan that has now been adopted. So the schedule this evening, as I said, is a public hearing on December fifth. The council is scheduled to take action to set the docket, and then the actual substantive review will begin. It'll come through the Planning Commission back to you next spring or summer. And with that, I'll step aside for the public hearing.
Well, first I'll ask if there are any clarifying questions of Ms. Spear for the public hearing on the matters presented. Any questions? There was a public comment we received in writing today. Does that impact or change the items that are on the docket for the public hearing?
The written public comment that was received by Mr. Matt Sweeney on behalf of Claude Remy, is that what you're referring to?
Yes.
That would also address application twenty twenty-three oh two, and it would actually request to add two more parcels to that amendment. If you give me just a second, I can show you where they would be. Right there. Sorry. Okay. So on this map, if you look at the larger one on the right, so the full outline of the downtown suburbia plan, right at the west side, where you see like a stair-step case of parcels in green, it would be the two that are immediately to the right of the last parcel, to the right along Gravely Lake. And I'm sorry, I don't have a way to point that out exactly, but it is within the area that we've been talking about. It's just two more parcels on the southern side of Wilder. I believe it's a road southwest. And so it wouldn't change the scope, the area in general of where this would be, but it would add two more parcels.
Procedurally, are those included in the scope for the public hearing tonight? Or would they be included within staff's work subsequent to this public hearing?
They're not in tonight's packet because that was published last week. But what we would do is if the council were to direct us to do so, is add it for your consideration on December fifth.
And that's something we can discuss, obviously, after the public hearing.
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Branstad.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Ms. Spear, with respect to twenty twenty-three oh two. So the crafting of this item was, there was originally a request for three parcels or two parcels that was submitted by an individual. And then in the review of the Planning Commission of that, there was a decision by the Planning Commission to expand the scope to include a whole range of parcels there along Wilder. And then we have in the comments submitted in writing to us a request in reaction to the Planning Commission's expansion to add two additional parcels on the other end of that. When this entire package goes forward on the docket and it ends up being re-referred to the Planning Commission and ultimately coming back to the City Council in some form. If we approve the docket with all of the parcels that have been mentioned, that Planning Commission remains having the flexibility at the end of the process to send us something that includes only some of the parcels?
Correct.
Okay, so that by including as the maximum number of parcels, we're not obligating to a final action that would actually deal with all of the parcels, only that all the parcels will be considered?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Anderson.
If the expanded parcels were included, would any of those properties become an unconforming use?
No.
Thank you.
Any other questions of Ms. Spear? Well, very good. More to follow on that.
Thank you.
This is the date set for the public hearing on the twenty twenty-three Lakewood Comprehensive Plan and Zoning Map Amendment docket as presented by our long-range and strategic planning manager, Ms. Spear. Public testimony on this public hearing is accepted by mail, email, or live virtual or in-person comment. Testimony may be submitted in advance by mail or email to the city clerk at six thousand Main Street Southwest in Lakewood or to her email address bshumaker@cityoflakewood.us. Testimony received up to an hour before the meeting has been provided to the City Council electronically, and the clerk will read the names of those who have submitted testimony in advance on this item.
Mayor, we received testimony in advance from Matthew Sweeney on behalf of Claude Remy.
Very good. Thank you. Testimony during the hearing is limited to three minutes per person. If you'd like to provide virtual public testimony, you'll need to join the Zoom meeting as an attendee by calling the telephone number listed on your screen, entering the meeting ID number indicated, and raise your hand using the feature to be called upon. So I will first call on those who have signed up on Zoom and raised their hand to address the council during this public hearing. Madam Clerk, do we have any individuals wishing to testify during the public hearing on Zoom?
Mayor, we have no attendees on Zoom that have raised their hand to testify this evening.
Very good. I've been handed the sign-in sheet for those who wish to address the council physically that are here in the audience tonight for this public hearing. And I have no names on the sheet, but again, that doesn't preclude any of you who are here and are very interested in providing testimony for tonight on the twenty twenty-three Lakewood Comprehensive Plan and Zoning Map Amendment docket. This is the time for your comments. Yes, sir.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I'm the culprit, Matt Sweeney. I came in late, wrote in late. But it kind of got, kind of expanded out of all proportion to what we originally submitted. So I'll take that as is. I submitted a letter which had a map. I love my map better than. You can see, we started out with, there's three parcels here on the end, which are owned by Mr. Remy. You can see him every time you drive by. Those parcels are crying out for redevelopment. And we felt that by being included in the CBD town center district, it would enhance the possibility for redevelopment there and probably kind of, you know, be part of the town center and the design review criteria that you folks spent so much time on within the center. It's currently zoned M three, which is the highest designation multifamily. So the shift isn't that big, but it's kind of almost symbolic in that, you know, we're right up against, I mean, you could throw a rock and hit it. And so that was our real thinking for making that initial application. Then we go to the Planning Commission, and the planning commissioners decide they're going to go, they went wild on us. And so I added all of this stuff. We have no objections to the addition. I think it probably helps, and there was quite a bit of commentary that, you know, if this is good, maybe all this would be better. When you get down to the end, you can see there's a number at the very end of the street and to the north that are also currently in the CBD. And one of the parcels is on the other side of Wilder Street. And that's my office right there, and it's also in the CBD, kind of as a little orphan right there. So our thinking was that to square off this end piece, if you will, adding the three extra parcels on the south there might, you know, enhance the development potential of that entire end piece. And so maybe we could actually get, you know, this bookends to bring it together. I couldn't remember what it was like there, so I drove down there in park today. And, you know, it's all blocked off there, right? There's a gate. You can't get through to Gravely Lake. And these three parcels are basically on the other side of the Gravely Lake side of the gate and so kind of make a natural break right there. And so again, you're right on, as far as I'm concerned, is that we could send this to the Planning Commission with these additional parcels, the whole meal deal, and then they could do whatever they wanted with it at that point and then send it back to you after we have, you know, a variety of input. I don't know if you'd need an actual formal motion to add these three extra parcels on there, but we would very appreciate it to get it to the commission, Planning Commission, and let them take a look at it.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Are there any other individuals in the audience wishing to address the council during this public hearing of the twenty twenty-three Comprehensive Plan and Zoning Map Amendment docket? Again, the council is not taking any action tonight. This is the chance for the public to provide testimony during this public hearing on this particular item. Any others? Seeing none, I'll declare the public hearing closed. We now turn to ordinances. Madam Clerk.
Ordinance number seven 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 relating to ad verum property taxes establishing the amount to be raised in twenty twenty-three by taxation on the assessed valuation of the property of the city and setting the property tax levy rate.
Thank you very much. For this particular item, I'll ask our deputy city manager, Talk Kraus, to provide a brief overview.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. This item was reviewed at the study session on November seventh, or I'm sorry, October twenty-fourth. We held the public hearing as required by state law on November seventh, and tonight we were asking for City Council's approval. The recommendation is that the City Council enact a one percent property tax levy increase, which is in accordance with state law. And this is a practice that the City Council has taken since two thousand and six. So with the levy rate, the proposed assessed, the levy rate per one thousand assessed value is reduced to seventy-one cents from eighty-one cents. And that concludes my presentation.
Thank you very much. Just a quick question on the agenda under the fiscal impact note there, just for clarity for purposes of those who may be viewing. The one percent increase equates to a seventy-six thousand forty-two dollar impact, so to speak. Is that spread among all property owners?
Yes, that is correct.
So that gives a sense of the impact, if you will, of the one percent increase per lot?
Yes.
Okay. Any questions of Ms. Kraus? Mr. Anderson?
I'd move adoption of ordinance number seven seven seven.
It's been seconded by Councilmember Anderson. Moved by Councilmember Anderson, seconded by Deputy Mayor Moss, and we adopt ordinance seven seven seven. Is there any further discussion? If not, oh, Mr. Branstad? No. If there's no further discussion, all those in favor of adoption of ordinance number seven 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 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Ordinance seven 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 has been adopted. We now turn to ordinance number seven seven eight. Madam Clerk.
Ordinance number seven seven eight, amending the twenty twenty-one to twenty twenty-two biennial budget.
Thank you. And again, we have our deputy city manager, Talk Kraus, for this item.
And this item was also presented to the City Council Study Session on October twenty-fourth. And we had the public hearing as required by state law on November seventh. Enactment is requested for this evening. The recommendation is for the City Council to approve the year-end budget adjustment as presented. Again, there were only two items that impacted the general fund, and that was thirty thousand for the SSMCP for due diligence on the next property purchases in the North Clear Zone and twenty thousand dollars for cones and delineators that will be used by the Public Works Department, Parks, and Police. And that concludes my presentation.
Thank you. Are there any questions of Ms. Kraus at this time? If not, I'll entertain a motion to adopt ordinance seven seven eight, amending the twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two biennial budget.
So moved.
Second, it's been moved by Councilmember Farmer, seconded by Councilmember Bokey, that we adopt ordinance seven seven eight. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say then by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ordinance has been adopted. We now move to ordinance seven seven nine. Madam Clerk.
Ordinance number seven seven nine, adopting the twenty twenty-three to twenty twenty-four biennial budget.
Three times a charm. We have deputy city manager, Talk Kraus.
So this item has been reviewed at various sessions, starting with the city manager's presentation of the proposed budget, followed by presentations by the departments for their department's review. As part of the budget process, just as we have just, the City Council had just approved the review of the property tax, we also brought back the six-year financial forecast, we held the required public hearings, and we discussed some fees and brought them back to the City Council, some changes to the original proposed budget. Those items were related to the three ARPA funded by Pierce County sewer projects. Since then, there has been no changes to the proposed budget. The recommendation for the City Council is to approve the twenty-three and twenty-four budget as presented.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions of Ms. Kraus before we consider ordinance seven seven nine? Mr. Branstad.
Ms. Kraus, I merely had a question that stemmed from the Community Services Advisory Committee meeting. And that is, within this budget, what is the amount that is set aside as the one percent for human services? Or is that broken down to that level? Or do we just look at the general fund number?
Yes, it is broken down to that level. We had set aside the one percent. Off the top of my head, I do not remember. I do believe it's like three hundred eighty thousand and then an additional increase in the following year.
Oh, Mr. Coffield.
Councilmember Branstad, the amount is four hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars.
Which does equate to Fund zero zero one. It would be one percent of the general fund of forty-three thousand, forty-three million, five hundred and thirty-five thousand, as Mr. Coffield indicated, one percent of that.
Thank you, Ms. Kraus. Mr. Mayor, I attended the Community Services Advisory Committee's special meeting earlier this evening. They held a special meeting to consider the fact that erroneously one application for the one percent funding was not considered by the committee in their process of evaluating and scoring things that. And so they did look at that application and determined that it fell within the mid-range of scoring amongst other applications that were approved and by the recommendations that we saw at the study session. So their ask to me is that this application would have, from the Make a Difference Foundation, would have scored as to receive an allocation of twenty-two thousand five hundred dollars annually for both years. annually for both years of the biennium. That, um, to insert it in within the, I guess, the 435,000 require a significant adjustment of the proposed awards to multiple organizations. And so they asked me to inquire as to whether the council would consider increasing the 1% allocation for the biennium to include a 22,500 annual award for this application. Uh, as opposed to them going back to work with all the applications and resorting, uh, and reconsidering, somewhere between 10 and 14 applications that were within a similar scoring range. So I'm asking the question. Uh, I would think that we, if we were inclined to do that or consider it, we wouldn't need to amend the budget this evening. But we could make it known that we would like in a, in a, in a future budget adjustment to allow that to, to happen. But, um, they're willing to go back to work with all the applications and look at things. Um, and, 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 and consider adjusting the entire table. If we're not open to adding what would be the $45,000 over two years, um, to, 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 to the budget. Um, I just told them I would just get an answer.
Well, very good. I, I, I don't know if I can provide an answer tonight, but, uh, I will open it up for comments by council members or perhaps Mr. Coffield or Ms. Kraus. Seems to me, based just on what we heard tonight from other public commenters, that it potentially impacts what we may do on the 1%. It could end up being 1.5% if, if we do that. And that's now something of policy that we have done yet, but you're right, it could be the subject of a budget adjustment. Uh, as could any number of things down the road. Any questions, comments by members of the council? Mr. Coffield.
Uh, Mayor, Council, I just remind the council that this item is coming back for discussion at your next regular meeting on Monday, December 5th. And so my recommendation would be that you take it up there because you'll have their actual recommendation.
The entire.
Applications in front of you.
The entire allocation recommendations.
That's correct, Mayor.
Absolutely.
And then my recommendation is consistent with Councilmember Branstadter would be to adopt the budget this evening. And then you, if you do make some policy changes there, you know, given the dollar amount, that's something that could be picked up as part of a carry forward adjustment, adjustment in early 2023.
We can certainly do that. And we do have those RFPs out for capital. On the ARPA side, there may or may not be monies left from that. We'll wait to see what happens, but it's all capital, RFPs at this time.
And, and the ARPA funds is a separate pot of money.
Absolutely.
Actually, that'll be coming forward to you for your review at your next study session, a week, a week from today, Mayor.
Okay. With that clarification, do I have, uh, any further questions of Ms. Kraus? Otherwise, I'll entertain a motion to adopt ordinance number seven, seven, nine, which adopts the 2023, 2024 biennial budget.
So moved.
It's been moved by council member Branstadter, seconded by council member Anderson, that we adopt the 2023, 2024 biennial budget as presented. Any further discussion? Uh, my only point before we take a vote is to thank you and staff and all of the departments that put a lot of work into this document. As we know, and hopefully the public also recognizes, the budget is the policy document by which council, uh, enunciates its stated priorities uh, by putting our money, quote unquote, where our priorities are. And the work takes place over a number of months with a lot of work between the executive, uh, members of the city manager's leadership. And it comes forth with a lot of good work, and I want to thank you for that because we spent a lot of time on it. And our budget process is quite transparent. Uh, you, uh, receive accolades not just from the auditor's office, but also other governmental accounting offices for your fine work, Ms. Kraus, and it's much appreciated. So. Okay, all those in favor of adopting ordinance number seven, seven, nine as presented, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The biennial budget has been adopted. We now turn to resolutions. Resolution 2022 dash 14, Madam Clerk.
Resolution number 2022 dash 14, setting the City of Lakewood 2023 fee schedule.
Ms. Kraus, this is, uh, your item for an overview.
So this item was presented to the city council at the study session on November 14. The two main areas of changes were in the parks fees and the planning and development fees. And most of the discussion focused on the planning and development fees. Uh, the city, based on conversations that occurred at that meeting, there were a number of changes in the significant tree removal permit fees. The first one has to do with the off-site tree replacement permit on two inches. We removed the or less. And the next section, and this is on page 87 of your packet. And towards the middle, there is a discussion of tree removal permit, single family and mixed residential. We took the zone lots greater than 10,000 square feet in size and we moved it, um, towards the bottom, uh, just before the zone lots greater than 10,000 feet. The zone lots for less than 10,000 square feet in size, there was a question on whether the permits were required. Before, we had permit required but no fee. That has now changed to no permit required, no fee. We added a section for zone lots, uh, less than 10,000 square feet in size with one or more Gary Oaks located and also fall within a shoreline setback and located within a critical area. That permit fee added is $100. We also changed the zone lots greater than 10,000 square feet in size. The permit required previously, the fee for that was $100. That was reduced now to $75. And then the rest of it, as it relates to the zone lots greater than 10,000 square feet in size, remained the same with the permit required at $150. Our assistant city manager and community and economic development director also, at the request of council, provided a memo, and that is found on page 115, which answers or provides three different scenarios. The scenarios were, uh, for tree removal based on the proposed fee schedules. And so he's listed one for scenario, one with a lot size of, uh, 9,585 square feet, one at just above the 10,000 square feet lot size, and then also a lot size of 10,250 square feet. I won't go over that, but if there are specific questions, we do have assistant city manager and community and economic development director, Dave Buer, here.
Thank you very much. Any questions of Ms. Kraus or Mr. Buer on these items? Mr. Branstadter.
I wanted to clarify because there isn't a, there isn't a, a note when it says a tree repo removal permit for a specific type of lot. It says, it permit required, and there is a, a, an a dollar amount. But in none of those cases does it say per tree. And there's not a note that says that the system is per, per tree. And while I would presume that, it might be clearer if it actually said that as opposed to someone assuming it's per lot.
I would prefer that the city council stay with per lot because I don't want to get into the situation or, or of is it, are we paying a fee per tree of $100? For example, or are we just doing tree analysis per lot? And then, if that's the case, then we'll get into the situation of whether or not they can remove trees, onsite replacement versus offsite replacement and so forth. So my goal was to try to simplify this as much as possible. And we'll get into the specific tree issue on a case-by-case analysis with the permit. That's my understanding of how we're wanting to move forward.
If, if, so if I understand your explanation is, um, someone with a residential lot that wants to remove five trees would have the same permit fee as someone who wanted to remove one?
Yes.
And I guess when we were discussing the tree preservation and, and, and in my interpretation of the ordinance, that that was not my understanding of our intent, Mr. Mayor.
Well, I open it up for discussion. Any other? Right, that's true. Any other questions first to Mr. Buer before we open him for a motion?
Okay, so, so just to clarify, if we approve it as written, it would be enforced as a per lot fee, not a per tree fee?
That is correct.
Any other questions of Mr. Buer? If not, do I have a motion to adopt resolution 2024 dash 14, setting the Lakewood 2023 fee schedule?
So moved.
Second. It's been moved by council member Anderson, seconded by council member Bokey that we adopt resolution 2024 dash 14. Is there any further discussion? Mr. Anderson?
Uh, my unders- uh, my understanding is the opposite of, of, uh, Mr. Branstadter's is that we, while their premitigation is account, the actual permit would be per lot. And I asked that, recall asking that question because I was concerned that it would be more expensive to permit, uh, something that would have no real difference in analysis. But more important than that, uh, I had great reservations about the fee. The fee for the, all the tree ordinance portion of the fee. Um, and, uh, I resolved that in my own mind by hoping that we look at it very carefully during the first year. I don't want this myriad of fees to discourage people from being, coming in and, and getting a permit. Uh, I'm a, I can't get my arms around what the unintended consequences might be, and since I can't articulate them well enough to oppose it, uh, I am going to vote in favor of this reluctantly and, and see what the first year brings.
Any further discussion, Mr. Branstadter?
And again, in all of our year of work, uh, of considering the, the trees, I was under the impression that we were going from a no-fee permit to a permit for tree. When we were in the, uh, when we were in the, the no-fee permit realm, um, it didn't seem to make much difference whether it was a single permit for a lot or a permit for each tree. That, uh, because we constructed it to where we've got a variety of different trees, we've got significant trees of one species, significant trees of another on different lots, um, that we've got potentially heritage trees, it seemed that the permitting process was going to be per tree. Uh, if we're going to do it per lot, and then, and then I am in, in agreement with council member Anderson that this is something that'll really have to be looked at a year from now as to, uh, what is the impact then in terms of, of how is it doing? Has it, has it served to preserve the trees we want to? And I guess that I would clarify that says that in my example of the five tree lot and the one tree lot, that it re- there remains the, the difference between the two lots in terms of the number of replacement trees that'll be required and the per, and the permitting and the fees that are related to rep- off-site replacement trees that are going to be per tree. Uh, so I'm not going to object to it tonight other than to concur with council members Anderson that this is something that just isn't going to automatically renew in a year.
Any further comments or discussion? Mr. Branstadter.
Hi, Mr. Mayor. I, I'd just like to move to a different topic in the fee schedule.
Okay.
Um, in the fee schedule, there is a, uh, a fee and it is on, uh, if, if we were to be looking at it, it's, it's, it's under the, 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 the section that relates, but it has to do with the transportation mitigation fee for the Central Business District. Um, and that, uh, essentially the this is a, this is a fee that we looked at when we did the review of the downtown area plan and we saw the history of how this fee had been being applied. Uh, and it looks unusual. Uh, the, the, these didn't look like as it might have been predicted, at least by me. Um, we had some discussions about a couple of the assessments include asking that one particular business's assessment fee be, uh, relooked at, and I believe staff is, is taking, taking, ta- taking that on. Uh, and, and honestly, um, we've also had some discussions over time about not a non, a lot, a lot of new things are being built in the downtown. And we were wondering whether this transportation mitigation fee, which exists only in this portion of the city, um, and was, was, was a problem that was an impediment, or was it, as it, as it was originally intended, to be a carrot to say this is going to make things easier for development to do? Um, as it is planned out, it is, one thing that is happening in the downtown is that there has been a great deal of preference for new businesses to move into existing buildings as opposed to building anything. Um, and, uh, you know, I, I, and totally some folks would say, well, the, the, the transportation fee to build something new is just too much, um, that the, uh, um, other things, but, but other folks would say, no, it's not really, it's not really the reason, okay, that, that, that's going on, right? And so we just don't know. We don't have any data to do that. The planning commission, when they did the review, their review of the downtown area plan, didn't look to make any changes to the, either in how the fee was calculated or the amount of it. Uh, candidly, uh, I was thinking that I would look tonight to propose an amendment to the fee code to eliminate the fee for 2023 in 2024, so that, and wait on the 2024 review of a central, of the district sub-area plan. And kind of also have a period of time to see without the fee what was happening. However, I've discovered that the fee schedule isn't the operable document that sets this $2,194 for trip fee. That it's actually established in code in the, uh, planned action ordinance. So you, you, we can't really adjust it to be able to go in and do that. Um, I would tell you that, yeah, yeah, yeah. One of the problems with the fee is that, is, is one of the problems with the fee is that, is, is it's being, being applied to identical businesses that were looking to establish themselves in the downtown, across the street from each other, say. And one is going to move into an addition, an, an existing space, and the other is going to move into what has been a, a vacant space or build themselves something to do that. The fees would be significantly different for both of those businesses, even though they were expected to generate the same traffic, being able to go and do that because of the way we have structured it. But since we can't do anything with it in the 2023 fee schedule, because the amount is specifically in the city code because of the Planned Action Ordinance, the methodology to make changes and to review it is, there seem to be two choices. One is, we can review it in 2024, when the next action of the downtown subarea plan and the Planned Action Ordinance is scheduled to take place. Or we can, in the, if we wanted to have that looked at, that particular element looked at, we could add it as an item on the document for the Planning Commission to look at in the 2023 cycle. And I suggest that to see, um, in, that, uh, in the coming weeks, we're going to be acting on what's on the 2023 docket for the Planning Commission to study and consider and make a recommendation to us. And if we have concerns that the fee is not quite right, and needs some adjustment, or BA needs to be totally redone and replaced, you know, that, that we can do it within a year instead of waiting to. So I mentioned that, not because I have an amendment to the document that's in front of us, but that, uh, if, if, if we could consider it before we move forward here in three weeks with dealing with a, uh, an, an approval of a 2023 docket, if we, there would be some interest in adding a review of that particular fee methodology and amount on the 2023 docket, so that it could become something, a change could be effective beginning in 2024, rather than in 2025. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson.
Or as, I'd like to ask for clarification on that from the city manager, not for tonight, or excuse me, the city attorney, sorry. John, you're off the hook. It's axiomatic that we can't amend an ordinance with a resolution. But can we, by ordinance, outside of cycle, amend the transportation fee or formula without change? Not necessarily changing the whole structure of our plan, but say, we will charge at a lesser amount or suspend, and do that by ordinance, amending the prior ordinance?
I will look into that to make sure I'm not missing something and give you an accurate answer.
Thank you.
And that was going to be my question, whether in lieu of removing it from the fee schedule, whether we could administratively suspend collection of the fee pending Mr. Brewer says no, the 2024 review?
May I have the microphone?
Sure.
The fee was set through a process which included a capital improvement plan and additionally, an EIS. So if you're wanting to make changes, from my perspective this evening, you're asking us to look at a supplemental EIS, review of a capital improvement plan for the downtown, and then looking at that in relationship to a different fee. A problem, or what's difficult for me right now as we talk about this, is we're in the midst of a very difficult comprehensive plan periodic update. And we have the council and the commission scheduled out already. On top of that, we're looking at the 23 comprehensive plan amendments that you held a public hearing on tonight. I'm running into a capacity issue, as well as the fact that we're likely going to have to hire some consultants to assist us. And in addition, if you include this with the capital, with the comprehensive plan amendments for 2023, we're likely to do an EIS for the entire program. I don't think that we can accomplish all that in 2023, so I let you, we'll probably have some more discussion on this, but those are my initial thoughts on this subject.
Got it. Well, well, thank you. Tangentially related, but unrelated necessarily to the motion that's been moved and seconded now on the table for consideration. But are there any other questions or further discussion? But it's a good comment and it sounds like something that we can discuss after at another study session down the road. Mr. Branstadter, did you have a question?
I, I, I think that we, you know, should move ahead in approving the fee schedule, but I would like to put for discussion, are there some options to suspend collecting the fee without going through uh, all the actual changes up to, to, to the plan? Pending the results of the 2024 piece to do that, and if that had to be done by, by ordinance, that's fine. But I'd at least like to create some time on a future agenda to discuss it at a time when staff has all, also had some time to put forward some information.
Noted, yep, and I think the city attorney has taken down feverish notes on that. Is that a motion to continue to a time uncertain? Not for the, yeah, not for the fee schedule, we have a motion seconded on the table for that. So in the absence of any further discussion, all those in favor of adopting the 2023 fee schedule, Resolution 2022-14, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Resolution has been adopted, we now turn to unfinished business. Is there any, Mr. Coffield?
There is none, Mayor.
New business, we have motion 2022-95, Madam Clerk?
Motion number 2022-95, approving the 2023 lodging tax funding recommendations.
Thank you, for this we have Deputy City Manager, Todd Kraus.
The the 2023 lodging tax funding allocation was, uh, reviewed at the September Lodging Tax Retreat. They held a full retreat to review all of the applications and make a recommendation to the city council. That was reviewed with the city council on November 14th. And of all the, the applications, there is one that stands out, and that is the $400,000 request for Lakewood Gardens Capital. And we have determined that that project, because there is no city ownership in the project, that is not eligible for capital funding for the project. So before the city council, there are two alternatives, the city council may accept or reject any of the lodging tax funding recommendations. The city council is not required to fund the full list of recommended recipients and may choose to award to some or none of the recommended recipients, with the exception of the $400,000, that one is off the table. But the city council may not award funds to any recipients that was not recommended by the lodging tax. The other option is the city council could return the recommendation to the lodging tax for further consideration. Under this alternative, the city council would need to provide direction as to what it desires from the ci- city, from the committee. So the city council may award amounts different from the lodging tax recommended amounts, but only after satisfying the procedural requirements of submitting the proposed changes to the Lodging Tax Committee for review and comment at least 45 days before financial action is taken. So that concludes my presentation. Oh, the fiscal impact is $904,350 without the $400,000 for Lakewood Gardens Capital Project.
Very good, any questions of Ms. Kraus, Mr. Anderson?
Was the committee ever informed of the problem with the $400,000 capital? And when was that?
Um, it was the, before the applications and before the, um, before the lodging tax retreat, they received the same information that went out to the city council.
So they told, they were told they couldn't do it and they recommended it in any way?
Yes.
The committee?
Yeah.
I can give you feedback, but, yeah.
So did they explain why they tried to advance an illegal appropriation?
Well, they, well, let me address that, I was the chair of the committee. They were of the impression, based on our history, that in the application, providing or giving Lakewood a leasehold interest in a number of city days at the Lakewood Garden facility might uh, make them qualify similar to what the McGavick Center had done historically. So that was the basis and the premise upon which they made the rec- well, the pitch for the recommendation, and then the recommendation was accepted. And it was always made conditional upon final review and uh, legitimacy by legal, and legal said it can't work, even though historically it did work for McGavick, the law has since changed and it can't work now.
Well, I, I thought that was, my question was whether they were told that before or after? Ms. Walk?
Councilmember Anderson and members of the council, uh, the, as I understand it, the Lodging Tax Advisory Committee has provided with all of the application materials. I reviewed those materials as part of my work for the council on the question. On the document, and I have to credit finance, they don't pull any punches, in red, I believe it was also bold and italicized language, it specifically says that, uh, capital requires an ownership interest by the city. That would have been there for any member reviewing the documents to see, it would have also been there for any applicant to see. And it is, it's literally red, bold-faced, italicized language.
Thank you. Any further questions of Ms. Kraus? Do we have a motion to adopt and approve the 2023 lodging tax funding recommendations under motion 2022-95?
Mr. Mayor, I, I move adoption of motion 2022-95.
It's been moved by Councilmember Branstadter, seconded by Deputy Mayor Moss, that we approve motion 2022-95. Is there any further discussion? Mr. Branstadter?
Yeah, yeah, Mr. Mayor, uh, I would move to, uh, amend the recommended authorizations for contracts to delete the $400,000 capital authorization for Lakewood Gardens from the list of, uh, projects that the city ma- contracts that the city manager can execute.
Second the amendment. It's been moved and seconded that the recommendations from the Lodging Tax Committee uh, include all but the capital request for Lakewood Gardens in the amount of $400,000, any further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? The amendment has been adopted, we now turn to motion 2022-95 as amended, is there any further discussion? All those in favor of the amended motion 2022-95 signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Motion 2022-95 has been approved. We now turn to reports by the city manager, Mr. Coffield.
Thank you, Mayor and Deputy Mayor, good evening, council members, a few updates to share with you. Wanted to let you know that, um, one of our new major property owners across the street, Kite Realty, is, um, you know, they, they merged with their previous owner sometime last year, or earlier this year, rather. But, uh, one of the things that they're doing is they're moving forward with an RFP, a request for proposal, that they plan on hopefully issuing in the month of December, to select a housing developer to partner with them. Uh, the reason they're not doing it is that they are, as they have pointed out, they are retail developers and not housing developers. However, on other properties that they own, they have, um, selected housing partners. The area that they're focused on bringing housing is the area that the city has wanted to see some development and some investment, is the area behind Target and behind the AMC Theaters. Um, they did provide some very, very conceptual ideas to us, just really some drawings and such. And really the feedback that we had for them, we thought that they're underestimating the ability of the market in terms of the density that they could build there. And, um, they did communicate that, well, what they're hearing from some of the local brokers is that that level of density is probably where it needs to be. Um, however, we have provided them some empirical data to state otherwise. And, uh, when they go through their RFP process, we're hoping that they'll find a housing developer that will take advantage of the downtown subarea plan and the increased density that is allowed there. Quite frankly, this is the furthest that we've ever come with, uh, the property over there as it relates to new development, so this is a bit exciting. Um, in addition, they did express their continued support to work with the city and some kind of a downtown park as well. So, um, they, again, they, you know, they, they, they assumed ownership of this property about six or eight months ago. They did promise that they wanted to move forward with some additional investments, so that they're doing that. Um, they are also working on filling up some of their vacancies as well and maybe moving around some, some tenants and or some new, uh, retail development as well, but again, I just wanted to share, share that with you. Um, oh, and their, their goal and objective is to try and have a housing partner and a housing developer, hopefully sometime in 2023. Um, the, uh, you know, the opioid settlement, I think you're all familiar with what's going on there in terms of, uh, the city receiving, I think it's about $67,000 a year beginning later this year. Um, one of the, um, one of the components of the settlement agreement is that there needs to be an, an opioid abatement council, an OAC, that needs to be set up, that would oversee the distribution and allocation of those funds, and, um, we, uh, were approached by the county last week that perhaps, um, there's some interest in creating a countywide regional OAC, so more to, more to follow on that. Um, a key, uh, federal legislative agenda for the council is to seek funny, funding in support of the, uh, again, getting back to the downtown subarea plan, the Green Loop Project, which would create a, a greenery, green boulevard encircling, you know, the downtown area. And, um, you know, our objective there is to pursue, uh, the RAISE grants, R-A-I-S-E, don't ask me, it's an acronym, I can't remember what it stands for, but it is also formerly known as, uh, Tiger and Build Grants. Um, we believe that the, uh, Congress is going to initiate the process to apply for the funds, either the latter part of this year or the very early part of 2023, whereas in the past, they have initiated the process in about second quarter. And, um, so, uh, to try and stay out ahead of this, we're actually going to initiate, you know, and start, start pulling together the information that we need um, to be able to effectively apply for this grant, this is a big lift in terms of the application process, specifically as it relates to the, um, benefit cost analysis that has to be done with a focus on creating jobs and things along those lines, which actually fits in really nicely with your downtown subarea plan, so, um, more to, more to come on that. In addition, on the state side, a key, um, item in your legislative policy manual is to see if there's any interest from DSHS in turning over ownership of historic Fort Sillicum, and, uh, I think as this body is aware, there's the, there's the historic buildings as well as the, um, the, um, parade grounds, um, over on Western State Hospital, uh, campus. Um, last week, we met with DSHS, and one of the things that they are interested in is actually doing this, but more in a phased approach. And what they would be, um, open to would be transferring ownership of the buildings and the land that the buildings sit on, but not the parade grounds, at least not now, and the reason being is because they're going through a major, significant, um, building spree down there, and they, they still need that area for parking. So, um, we are going to undertake some ideas and some options there, we are also going to reach out to the Historic Fort Sillicum Association and get their feedback and interest on that as well. But again, the good news is that DSHS is interested in, um, working with the city to, to have the city take over ownership, um, of, of, of that area. Um, I also, uh, wanted to commend our police department, and specifically Chief Zaro and, and his team, actually his, um, the, uh, Property Pro Act team, they did another retail emphasis last week focusing on Safeway, and, uh, they ended up with, um, 12 And they ended up with 12 arrests for a number of, a number of thefts. And again, the purpose there is to get the word out in the street that if you're going to come to Lakewood and, you know, conduct your nonsense and conduct yourself in a criminal manner, then you're going to be held accountable. So just again, wanted to compliment the chief and his team there. As it relates to your calendar, before I forget, just want to wish all of you and your families a happy Thanksgiving. I, I learned about midweek last week that Thanksgiving was on Thursday and Friday, and I was wondering why nobody wanted to meet with me or talk to me on, on certain things on those days. And somebody then politely reminded me it was Thanksgiving. It might have been the city attorney, so. But in all seriousness, as we look out after Thanksgiving next week, on, on, on Tuesday and Wednesday, there'll be the 13th Annual Fallen Officer Food Drive, which will also go hand in hand with their sixth annual blood drive, which will occur on not just Tuesday, but Wednesday as well. And if you'd like to sign up for that, I know I provided a link for you to be able to do that. On Tuesday evening, actually next Monday, you have a council meeting, you have a study session. Next Tuesday evening, you'll have a joint meeting with your state legislative delegation to review your 2324 state legislative agenda will be right here in the city councils. And since it's at 6:00 PM, unless there's any objection, we will provide you some, some, some dinner. Also, the following Thursday, December 1st, you'll have a joint meeting with your Pierce County Councilmember Jenny Hitchen, and that also will begin at 6:00 PM. And so we'll have some dinner for you as, as well that, that evening, so that you're not rushing around, because I know you're coming from your day jobs. And then as we roll into the weekend following that, on December 4th and 5th, I know I had given you an update last week. You'll have visitors from, from, from the city of Gimhe, Republic of Korea, who will be visiting with you, your sister city, on both the 4th and the 5th for some events. And then the last major event of the year is December 10th. On Saturday, beginning at 4:30, we will have the Christmas Parade of Lights and of course, the tree lighting, and we'll be right back out here in front of City Hall to be able to, to be able to do that. So with that, that's, that's my report, Mayor.
Thank you. Any questions of Mr. Coffield? Mr. Branstadter?
Yeah. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Coffield, do you have any guidance for us regarding a gift the city of Lakewood might present to the city of Gimhe? In that exchange of gifts is a protocol?
Yes, Councilmember Branstadter. As a matter of fact, the city clerk has been researching some options there and I was going to reach out tomorrow and send those on to you to see if any of them pique your interest. So more to follow on that.
My thank you.
Any further questions? If not, we'll turn to council comments and close out the evening. Mr. Boki? Sure. Yep. Councilmember Bell?
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to say that I attended the EDB, but I will let the mayor speak to that. That was last week and it was a wonderful event. And also I wanted to thank the Niskali tribe for coming today. I thought it was wonderful. Loved hearing the native language and recognizing them. So thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Branstadter.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I also attended the EDB function and I thought that Lakewood came across well in the, in the presentations there and, and, and our efforts were, were valued by the, by the program. I would note that in the Association of Washington Cities Quality Communities Scholarship Program, that, that elected officials were generous in the past year, I guess, because they've been able to move the value of the scholarship that will be provided to those who are selected from amongst the nominees to $2,500 from $1,500, as it has been in past years, to be able to go and do that. But that also brings up the, the question of our, of our local effort in a scholarship for, for, for our nominee that we have done as a console in partnership with the Lakewood First Lions Club. And that $750 scholarship, which is half funded by them and half funded by, by our personal donations. We actually collected more amongst ourselves last year than, than was necessary to meet the 375. So, so we only have to actually raise amongst ourselves $200 this year, but to the extent that any of you can contribute that, I'd be glad to serve collecting it and transferring it to the Lions Club so that they can can do that. Would note that last year we had a nominee that we awarded that scholarship to. Some person was not selected for a AWC scholarship, but we did have a previous Lakewood winner that received one of the AWC second round scholarships for, for their sophomore year at Columbia University. So that, that actually in the, in the, in the nine-year history of that program at AWC, Lakewood actually has more scholarship recipients than any other city, although we are, we are, we are tied with one. And I guess that, you know, I, I think that tonight was, is maybe a beginning of a themed set of public comments around the library. And while we had our joint meeting with the the library trustees, this is really an action that is in their, their wheelhouse to make specific, concrete decisions and to move forward definitively or not. But I do think that I'm also looking forward to some of the work, the preparatory work that staff is doing to gather us some information about what options might be available to us as a as, as, as action items to move forward in what is definitely an item of where the community is expecting something decisive to happen sooner rather than later, even if the community isn't all completely of one mind as to what that should be. So I think we need to give, in the new year, be be looking to working closely with, with, with the library trustees. If they're willing to work closely and with some degree of urgency with us, but also to take a look at what our options are if we have to, it's best to act independently.
Very good. Councilmember Farmer?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I did want to thank Councilmember Branstadter for attending the Community Services Advisory Board Special Meeting tonight. I had another obligation, so that was very much appreciated. I, I too wanted to thank the, I, I particularly wanted to thank the, the Library Community Advisory Committee. This is volunteer. And there, there was a lot going on. There's, it was a big and not an easy task to determine elements of the library of the future while also honoring our past. And so I think that's a, that's a very weighty, that's a very weighty thing and, and a small number of people are not going to shoulder that. We're all going to, to be on that together. And I, I am particularly looking forward to the next steps that are going to be initiated by the library system. Because this is, this, the Lakewood Library is one of many in their system. And this is, this is really their thing. And, and yes, we have some things that we as the city council can do, but this is, I just wanted to point out that this is the library system's thing. But again, thank you to the residents that, and the folks who, who accepted the call from the small committee of us who looked through the applications and were willing to serve. I very, very much appreciate that. And last, in relation to the South Sound Housing Affordability Partners Toolkit that you've all been reviewing, thank you. I've received written verbal comments from two councilmembers. And they both revolve around the SEPA recommendation in the toolkit. And we'll have more information for you. I've been in touch with the city manager and staff is still conducting their review. And so they expect to have that at, at some point before our next council meeting on the 28th, so that we can have a conversation ahead of the next SHAPE Executive Board meeting, which is December 2nd. That's all I have. Thank you.
Very good. Councilmember Anderson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. With respect to the library, I, I don't think that this body has had great confidence in the library system over the last 10 years. I, I am anxious to hear what the cost of deannexation might be. Unfortunately, I think it's going to be an added third instead of an added 5%. You know, it won't be worth it. But I, I am going to be a skeptic and would, if, if the cost was equal or a small surcharge, I'd certainly want to deannex after our last 10 years of frustration and then having the rug pulled out from under the community. Step, the Support the Enlisted Project was mentioned in comments tonight. That is not a national organization. It, I, I'm familiar with it because I got a cold call from the founder before they came up here, asking for me personally to introduce them to the three-star out at JBLM. And I thought, eh, it sounds shaky. So I did a lot of due diligence. They have won award after award in the San Diego area for their efficiency, their success rate for the uniqueness of their program. And they brought it up here focusing, as was indicated tonight, on a similarly situated lower enlisted cadre at the base. They do good work. I'd like to see some way to, to help them. I haven't had any I, I did make an introduction to Garrison, I think it was, and they took it and they thought highly of him. They refer people. So it, it, it seems to work. And opioid settlement, you know, we've got one more coming. I would only caution that there is, there has to be a countywide organization, it doesn't have to be organization or some type of agreement between the parties. That includes us, because we're direct recipient as to the oversight. This is a pass through like a treasury for passing the money through and some sort of or discernment when it comes to whether it's going to projects that are eligible. It does not mean that we give all the money to the health department, which is what they want. And they have stuck their nose in the tent. Camel's nose is in the tent already. They want to get it like they got the tobacco money and they want to spend our money. And I'm confident they would do it inefficiently, inefficiently and ineffectively. So just be on guard what we're asked to sign as far as a cooperative agreement, so we don't lose control of the purse strings. And finally, I found myself in this strange circumstance of twice in a row apologizing to Sheldon Cooper, The Big Bang Theory, and having another exciting episode of Fun with Flags. Somebody scrambled their flags back there. So let me tell you how it goes. The US, the Washington and the city flag are in the right spot. Then you go by order of precedence. It's Army, Marine Corps, dot in time of war, Navy. Air Force. How Merchant Marine got in front of a military service? I don't know. Coast Guard is not supposed to be there. It's supposed to be behind the Air Force because it's not part of the Department of Defense. And there's currently, currently some little kerfuffle going on, I think, between the Coast Guard and the Space Force, but the general thought is that the Space Force flag is going to go in front of the Coast Guard flag because it's part of DOD. And except when there's a time of war and the Coast Guard's attached to the Navy, then it jumps way over here. But we don't have to worry about that. So the bottom line is the right side is scrambled and the Space Force belongs over there too. So I don't know how it got rearranged, but Fun with Flags. I know, I know there's a military community, somebody's, somebody walks in here, they're going to mention it. I mean, it's, it's, it's happened before. We've been incorrectly corrected, but we've been correctly corrected a few times. And then it's, you have to, you can balance them out. They go from left to right, except for the, the first, the middle three.
That's all. Mr. Coffield will get right on that, I'm sure. Deputy Mayor Moss?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I too attended the EDB annual meeting and, I mean, I will bring that forward, but it was well attended and very much enjoyable too. The one thing that I wanted to say is this, a great need, we know that there's a great need in our community for special assistance, especially during this time of the year. So as Secretary for the Air Force Association, I'm happy to say that the Air Force Association was able to deliver 294 turkeys to McCord, Joint Base Lewis McCord, McCord Field for the airmen that would not have been able to serve Turkey for Thanksgiving. So 295 turkeys were donated through the Air Force Association to the airmen.
That's great. Well, thank you. I'll, I will lead off with my comments on the EDB Economic Development Board Annual Meeting. They recognized the city for its partnership in the BIPOC Accelerator Program. In addition to the county providing resources, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think the city of Lakewood was the only municipality recognized as partnering to a significant extent, a $500,000 contribution from our ARPA funds. And it was money well spent. And certainly we received recognition for our contribution. And I think that's great. And I hope we can do more of that in the future because it sounds like the outcome in the small business community, especially in the minority veteran and women owned small businesses has been very, very positive. So kudos for that. And of course, we got recognition for the Lakewood Station Subarea Plan as well. It's good to get recognized once in a while by the Department of Commerce because I'm sure that they're asking for us to do any number of things over the course of time. So it's always good to get recognized. The Joint City Council Library District Meeting, we all attended that. I think that once we get the financial information from staff, we'll be in a position to further discuss with some clarity whether or not deannexation may or may not make sense. I do believe Mr. Coffield provided kind of a rough swag about how much tax monies are generated from that portion of our property taxes. And while that may, we'll just, we'll find out. But while that may be part of an operating budget, it certainly has no ability to fund a capital building program or project. So more to follow on that. It's, you know, the taxpayers ultimately are going to have to make a decision. On Thursday evening, after that event, I did attend the ride along with members of our Lakewood Police Department and got to observe the Retail Emphasis Program in action. They do a fantastic job. All of the folks that were picked up for shoplifting, I think to a T, had a substance abuse issue that they discussed with the officers. And so, you know, it's really an interesting time to see people feeling the need to having to fund their habit. And we, we as a society have to figure out how best to ensure that they get treatment so they don't have to resort to those opportunities. But our police department did a great job. And it does send a message. And the people who were picked up and taken to jail, each and every one of them that night went to the Niskali Jail. I think got the message, hopefully. On Sunday, I had the chance to be in Lakewood Garden to attend a fantastic event called Solstice Lights. And I would encourage folks, if you haven't had a chance to go out there, it is an incredible array of lighting and data-driven music. an incredible array of lighting and data-driven music and live instrumentation. It is, you know, last year was the first year they put it on. Again, this is your lodging tax money at play. They did a fantastic job, and the guy who runs it is a guy by the name of Sam Stubblefield. He's a nationally-recognized artist. He's harnessing atmospheric sounds and vibrations that come out of a number of buoys around the oceans that goes zooping up to a satellite and come down and impact how the lights are displayed on the various trees to music. It's really something else. And they're actually working with Steven Spielberg on other projects. And Spielberg got a chance to see their work at Lakewood Garden on Zoom. And so, you know, it brings some notoriety to little old Lakewood and a fantastic amenity that we have right in our backyard. So it runs from the 25th of November through January 2nd. It's fantastic, and I, I think it's worthy of checking it out. So that is all I have for tonight. We have lots to do in the next couple of weeks. I wish you all a happy Thanksgiving holiday, and with that, we're adjourned.